The following is a special presentation of the Renda Broadcasting News and Public Affairs Department. News Talk 1160 WCCS AM is pleased to present Debate 2015, a debate focusing on the Indiana County Commissioners' Race. Today's debate is being heard on AM 1160 WCCS and streaming live on 1160WCCS.com and being sponsored in the public interest by Penn Mechanical. If you would like to submit a question for consideration, visit 1160WCCS.com or email And now, here's the moderator for today's debate, Todd Marino.
Good morning, everybody. Welcome, 1160WCCS, as we begin our candidates' debate, being brought to you as a public interest by Penn Mechanical Group. Penn Mechanical Group proud to call Indiana County their home, and they want to encourage you to get out and vote on November 3rd. I'm going to get out of the way as much as I can during this next hour and a half and let the candidates do the talking, and I will introduce them to you now in the order by which they drew names for the presentation here this morning. Shereen Hess is running for county commissioner, Azius Rod Ruddick, Tammy Shetler, Bob Colgan, Mike Baker, and Tony Moretti. A reminder to all the candidates that I'll be identifying you by name for our listeners' benefit, as well as we ask you questions so that they can tell who is talking at any given time. As you are very well aware, most of the questions that people have, maybe not put it that way, let's just say many of the questions that people have have to do with the property tax assessment in Indiana County, and I have many, many questions submitted by our listeners, and we will begin with that topic. But first, each of you will have the opportunity now to present your opening statements, and Shereen Hess, you are first.
Good morning. I'm Shereen Hess. I've lived in Indiana County for almost 25 years. I'm from a small rural community, much like Indiana in Center County. I've come from a family of blue collar workers and farmers. I'm the first in my family to go to college, and I hold a degree from Penn State in the College of Agricultural Sciences. I was married for 21 years, and my late husband and I have raised four sons. We had two in college and two at home. I've been a leader in Indiana for 25 years, having served as president of League of Women Voters, where I learned how to study the issues and come to conclusions based on facts and evidence. I've worked with state, national, and local leaders on developing public policy that is sound and based on facts. Local governments face serious issues right now, and we need serious leaders who are trustworthy, informed, transparent, and competent. Even though budgets are strained, we have to invest in an economy that provides family sustaining jobs, and we have to take care of our vulnerable citizens, we have to maintain emergency services, and we need to find ways to connect all of our county citizens to the wider economy. It might seem impossible, but I'm running because I've seen firsthand how impossible becomes real when good people work together. Thank you.
That is Shereen Hess, candidate for county commissioner, and second for an opening statement is Rod Ruddick.
Yes, this is Commissioner Rod Ruddick, and I want to first thank Renda Broadcasting for hosting this morning's forum, and to the listeners who have joined with us today. For the past 12 years, I have served as your county commissioner. For the previous 40 years, I served in key positions in both education and military service. Each assignment has required astute fiscal management, the willingness to listen, and lead by example. In this journey, we have made common sense decisions to grow and energize our community. We have worked as a team, created partnerships, and continue to focus our energies on long-term strategies critical to our county's economic future. Nothing is more in focus than our current reassessment. Today's government requires transparency and fiscal control of every invested tax dollar. We will not stray from our commitment to growing existing businesses, promoting job growth, and yet maintain a safe, protected environment. We also focus our energies on infrastructure development to build for a better tomorrow. I personally set several priorities in motion when I entered office. They have resulted in improved water and sewage extensions, road and bridge upgrades, land acquisition for the KCAC convention complex, facility upgrades to our jail, county, and magisterial court facilities, the installation of a state-of-the-art 911 public safety radio communications network, and now the addition of optic fiber connectivity into our rural communities. We will soon open a community-based veterans shelter. For the past 12 years, I have worked hard to now host a veterans outpatient clinic to address and serve the needs of our honored veterans.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Ruddick. We're out of time, and we'll move to our next candidate for county commissioner, Tammy Shetler.
Good morning, Indiana County, and thank you again to Renda Broadcasting for allowing us all to come here and speak with everyone in Indiana. I am born and raised in Indiana County. I lived most of my life in the Blairsville area, and I now live in West Wheatville Township with my husband of 20 years, and we have a 17-year-old son that attends United High School. I am running for commissioner, and I will stay true to the words that I have come out and spoken, that I will be a commissioner for the people of Indiana County, from all of the areas of Indiana, from the north, the south, the east, the west. I want to be here to listen to your concerns. I know you have felt that, as I've been out speaking to you. The reassessment issue is a major issue. We will have to work very hard and diligently to come up with the correct and accurate numbers so that we can go forward with that project. If that project cannot be fair and accurate numbers, then I will be the person that will not want to certify it until they are correct. I will be here every step of the way for the county, trying to help bring in good jobs to the area, help to promote organizations to protect children, and help fight with the drug epidemic that's going on in our county. We are losing people left and right in Indiana County to the epidemic that's going on there, and there needs to be a bigger focus to stop families being torn apart, they're having their loved ones taken from them. So I respectfully ask for your support on November 3rd, and I look forward to working for the people of Indiana.
Thank you, Mrs. Shetler. Bob Colgan is our next candidate for county commissioner.
I want to thank everybody for allowing us here the opportunity to come and state our case here for county commissioner. Again, I'm Bob Colgan. I've been married to my wife, Britta, for 27 years now. I have four beautiful kids and a gorgeous granddaughter. I've lived in this area all my life, and I'm a self-employed plumber. I'm a second generation. My son is picking up the third generation of our business. I'm in this race quite simply because I'm not very happy with what's going on in Indiana County. The assessment, I guess, would be the icing on the cake, but through the years, I've heard complaint after complaint from multiple people. There's no jobs here, there's no well-paying jobs here, whether they be union-based or non-union-based, there's just really nothing here. I have a hard time trying to understand why we don't promote our businesses that are within the county rather than driving them out. I do believe we have a God-given natural resource, gas here, we have coal here, and God put it here for us to use it, and my intentions are to try to promote these industries back, get the EPA to lighten up on some of their outlandish rules that they have on this, and deal with this assessment, which is currently the biggest scab on our back right now.
Thank you, Mr. Colgan.
Thank you very much.
Mike Baker is our next candidate for county commissioner.
Good morning, Todd. Good morning, everyone, and thank you, Indiana County, for tuning in this morning to hear our debate. My name's Mike Baker. I am Indiana County Commissioner. I came to the office about two years ago when another commissioner retired. Just to give you a little bit of background on myself, I've lived in Indiana County all of my life, born and raised in the Blairsville area, now live in Indiana Borough with my wife Karen. We've been married for 32 years. We have four children and four grandchildren. After high school, I graduated from Blairsville High School, became a coal miner, worked for R&amp;P Coal Company in Center Township for five years, was a member of the United Mine Workers of America, also was a paramedic division supervisor for Citizens Ambulance Service for many years, and managed the Armah and the Blairsville stations, also a flight paramedic for the helicopter program with Stat Medevac throughout the tri-state area. And I also became chief deputy coroner, and finally, the elected county coroner for eight years here in Indiana County, where I served families from every community and every corner of Indiana County. I just want to tell you a little bit about my educational background. I do have an associate degree in network management from computer tech, and a bachelor's degree in business administration from Corbin University, the master of arts in employment and labor relation from IUP, and a master of forensic science from National University. Currently, I serve on the Indiana County Fire Training Academy Executive Board and the Indiana County Historical and Genealogical Society Board. I was also a member of the-
All right, Mr. Baker, we're going to have-
I'm all done. I'm finished.
Yes, there is a large clock. I should remind our listeners and our candidates, there's a large countdown clock that they have a clear view of, and so we move on to our final candidate, Tony Moretti.
Good morning, Indiana County, and thank you, Renda Broadcasting, for asking me here. I was born and raised in Indiana County, and I grew up in Crickside. Right now, I live outside a home on 25 acres with my wife, and she is an employee of Indiana Hospital for the last 20 or 32 years. We have four children. We have many animals on our 25 acres. I was a graduate of Marine Center. I started in the deep mines for R&amp;P. I started to buy equipment in 1979 and decided I wanted to go in my own business, full-time in 1988, and I'm in the excavation business. I just want it to be known that I'm not a one-dimensional candidate here. We have items on the agenda that we want to see done, and one is to control the spending and develop a good relationship with the people that we have out there to serve. Right now, we're in tough times, and it's a challenge, and I'm ready for it. So, thank you.
Tony Moretti, and thank you to all of the candidates for their opening statements. We'll move on to our questions, many of them submitted by our listeners, many of them also having to deal with the actual assessment, and that's where we will begin, and Shereen Hess will be our first respondent to this question. On Wednesday, Judge Martin extended the deadline for the reassessment certification to February 15th to allow for the completion of the appeal process. What is your position now about certifying the reassessment results at that time?
My position now, and always has been, is that we need more time, and when I'm elected, I'm going to keep on supporting that notion that we need more time for people to go through the appeals process, including those who did not make the August 10th deadline. I believe that the property owners need more assistance with this very unfamiliar process in which sometimes the balance of the power in that room seems to be in question. So I continue to support the extension of the time period, and I continue to support it because that's the best way to ensure a fair and accurate and transparent process. I have not changed my position, and I continue to support that, as well as getting some more education out there about the program, the Clean and Green Program, that will help landowners. I also believe that we need to go to the people and not ask them to come to us, and when I'm elected, I'm going to establish some satellite offices around the county. I believe there are organizations that will be glad to help with that endeavor, and I will call on them, and I believe they will help. I also believe that we need more information in the letters that go to landowners, whether it's about new valuations or anything to do with the appeal process. There seems to be a lack of information when it comes to communicating with folks, and I commit to sitting in on appeals and learning as much as I can about that process so that people can be informed and can have the fairest and most open process possible. Thank you.
Thank you. I should remind our listeners as well that the format is that each of the candidates will have two minutes to respond to each question, and each of the candidates as well will have a chance to rebut what another candidate said. That candidate will then have a chance to rebut what was said, and there will be one-minute time limits on each of those. So you'll all get a chance at these questions. Commissioner Ruddick, the question has to do with the reassessment certification, the deadline established by Judge Martin now February 15th to allow for completion of the appeal process. What is your position now about certifying the reassessment results at that time?
I'm pleased to offer comments since I had the ability to testify to Judge Martin on behalf of the county commissioners this past week. I went in with the knowledge base that the county commissioners, the three of us, had unanimously approved the petition that went forward to the judge, which basically said that we are moving forward with our appeal process, the formal appeals are working. The problem with it, of course, is that we've had about 3,000 more appeals required than we had anticipated at the beginning of the project, and there are many reasons for this. First of all, the reasons aligned to the data collection process that I think was significantly flawed, and we have really truly not recovered from that. The values that went out to support the reassessment process were inflated, and so there has been a great deal of interest and need to get those individuals involved. Specific to my position on the certification, once we get the information in, we bring a team of experts in to see how we're doing-
Okay, Commissioner Ruddick.
Then we will make a decision, but I can tell you, if it is not correct-
We're out of time.
-we will not certify. Thank you.
All right. Mrs. Shetler, again, the question. On Wednesday, Judge Martin extended the deadline for the reassessment certification to February 15th to allow for completion of the appeal process. What is your position now about that certification at that time?
I assume-
All right, we're just waiting for the clock here. All right. Well, I'll keep it on this clock while we're straightening that out, and I'll signal you, okay? All right, so your position on the certification, and did Commissioner Ruddick, was he given his time?
Well, they had two minutes on the clock. It should be one minute. So it should be one minute. And there were two mistakes on the clock.
Why should there have been one?
Because the response was one minute.
Well, that wasn't a rebuttal, that was his actual question.
The only question goes to one candidate, and anybody else has the option to rebut.
Oh, I was under the assumption that each of the candidates would have two minutes with each question.
And then one for rebuttal.
And then one for the rebuttal. One for anybody that raised a rebuttal. Okay, you're not going to say it that way? Okay, so, one minute for rebuttal for each of those. So again, I'll pose the question. Judge Martin extended the deadline for the reassessment certification to February 16th. What's your position now about certifying the reassessment results at that time?
Tammy Shetler, I am very glad that it got pushed back to February 15th, but I do not think that this is still going to give enough time to get the accurate, fair, and correct information out to the people. So at that point in time, if I am in office at that time, I will not certify having these numbers go out to the people. I still feel there is time that needs to be looked into to get everything corrected, and once that is corrected, and once they are fair, once they are accurate, I will then back the certification, but not until that time, and I don't think February 15th gives us that amount of time. And I also think I'm a big supporter of the farmers, and they don't want to see clean and green. I know this has some good things, but I'm supporting them because I don't want government telling them what to do with their property, and I think if we get the fair and correct accurate information, the farmers will also be happy with that. Thank you.
All right. Bob Colgan, the question having to do with the deadline for the reassessment certification extended by Judge Martin to February 15th. What is your position now about that certification at that time?
Well, I guess that takes the argument off the table, whether or not I have the ability to rescind something, and so I'm happy for it either way. It would save the county some money, but I, along with Tammy, go along with this. I just don't see any way that this information could be accurate by that time, so I'm going to be staunch and say that I definitely won't be certifying it. Until we get numbers down which are percentages, and I'm talking single-digit percentages, dare say maybe the teens, but gosh, when we're talking about things that are four, five, six, eight times what they're supposed to be, it's ridiculous. Then my intention is to go after EST on these ridiculous, this data that they gathered. Again, I believe they gathered this ridiculously so that they could absorb more money through appeals and stuff. I think they were like fishing, just like fishing for a bass and rilling us in.
Thank you, Mr. Colgan. Mr. Baker, the question has to do with the reassessment certification extended by Judge Martin to February 15th. What is your position now about certifying the reassessment results at that time?
Well, certainly, I'm very glad that the judge gave us the extension to February the 15th, because I believe that everybody who wants an appeal in this process has got to have it. Some people did miss the August 10th deadline, and that may be for various reasons, but whatever it is, everyone who needs an appeal and wants an appeal should get one. I do want to say this, that, and I have said it for a long time, that even if we extend to February the 15th, I still think that there are enough errors and enough insufficiencies in the data to make it very difficult for me to believe that we could possibly certify by February the 15th. And I would tell you that the numbers that I have looked at and as deeply as I have gone into this, I would say that it may take us as much as another year to get this thing correct. We need to hold EST's feet to the fire. We need to determine whether or not there were breaches there, and we'll bring third-party people in to do an evaluation, and we'll bring in a team of professional advisors of local people in to stand beside the commissioners and to help us to get this thing right, but I can't certify before that happens.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Moretti, the question has to do with the reassessment certification to February 15th of next year. What is your position now about certifying the reassessment results at that time?
Well, it's such a relief to know that this will be handed to the new commissioners. And I mean, this has been going on in my mind since those reassessments papers were handed out to us back in July. We have to get this correct and work with the local people and get it across the board that these numbers get straightened out, because this will devastate Indiana County, but it's not only the landowners, it's landlords and the commercial people. And of course, like everybody else is saying, go after EST. It seems like it's a money grab off of those guys. And again, I'm just so happy that it has been extended, and whatever time it takes to get it done correctly, then so be it.
All right. Thank you very much. Mrs. Hess, you have one minute to rebut any of the other arguments that you've heard.
Thank you. I would like to point out that I did release a statement on September 30th through Facebook and through my website at hessforcommissioner.com, in which I clearly stated that I supported an extension to February of 2016, and I very clearly outlined a plan for what I believe should happen with the reassessment process. So I just wanted to mention that, that I do have those details. I've had them on my website for well over a month, so thank you for the opportunity to mention that.
All right. Our second question will go to Commissioner Ruddick first, and Commissioner, you'll have two minutes for this question. It has to do with the cost of the appeal process and whether EST should be held responsible for the county recouping that cost, and if you could just discuss that general issue, the cost of the appeal process and EST's role in helping to foot that bill.
Well, first of all, there was a contract that was approved by the county commissioners with EST. This was about two years ago, and in that contract, there was an agreed payment plan which would include the cost of the formal appeal process to take us up through the original process of October 31st of this year. I can tell you right now that we are honoring that contract through that process, and any additional formal appeals that are being conducted up through the February 15th date will be done at the cost of EST and not the cost of the county. They will be providing the services and support. We will have no additional burden of cost on the county for what they have required us to do in additions to the formal review process. We feel this is at least an opportunity for us, as stated before, to get those formal reviews, and I needed to tell you this, the appeal process is working. We're actually getting some good results in terms of validating better values for properties across the county, probably more so with commercial and residential right now, but we're working on the land, and so we think the formal review, formal appeal process from a cost standpoint has been taken care of.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruddick, for the rebuttals. Tammy Shetler, you have the first chance at a rebuttal on this issue.
First off, EST failed this county. They went out and were given opportunities to go to everybody's property and give what was supposed to be fair and accurate information. The numbers were so over the top for people that it was absolutely ridiculous. I hold EST responsible for the majority of what happened in this county. I will not forgive them. We will never know what EST and these outrageous numbers have done to people. We'll never know the people that got sick when they got this, that actually worked themselves up into a heart attack. They need to be held accountable for what they did to this county, and I want to be a part of that. If it gets to that point where we have to sue them, we're going to sue them. We have to have to work towards getting this fixed for the good of the county so that we can grow and prosper and move forward. Thank you.
Very good. Tammy Shetler there. I will point out to each of the candidates, you don't have to rebut if you don't choose to, just wave on to the next candidate. Mr. Colgan, it's your opportunity now.
Yeah, well, oh, excuse me. As far as I'm concerned, EST does need to be held accountable. This is harvest time for farmers. I had a farmer call me the other day and tell me how many thousands of dollars he loses every time he goes in on one of these appeals. And again, if they were a legitimate appeal, that's one thing, but the data is so outlandish. I mean, it is just so stinking outlandish that only a pure imbecile would come up with some of the stuff they've come up with. So for me to have to take off work during my busy time of the year, as well as a farmer during his harvest time, somebody needs to be held accountable. You've got to remember this, from the garbage man to the president, everybody's time is worth something, and for somebody to accuse somebody of having this, that, or whatever on their property, and it doesn't even exist, and they got to lose money, sure, I want to go after these people.
Very good. Mr. Colgan, Mr. Baker?
Yeah, thanks, Todd. I just do want to say a couple of things. First of all, I do want to reiterate that the county commissioners have not entered into any kind of an agreement with EST to pay them any additional monies because of the extension of the appeals. That's not going to happen on our watch. I know that's for a fact, and we've made it very clear to them that they will have no more corporate enrichment as a result of the mess that Indiana County has been left I know that there has been some progress made on the appeals boards, but I have a problem knowing that the reports that I get back are that the appeals boards are being extremely inconsistent. Some boards are being much more lavish and much more generous, while others are being not so much, and sometimes it can be the roll of the dice depending on which board you go to for your formal appeals. The other thing I just want to say is the macroeconomic effect that this whole thing is having on Indiana County, it's more than just what it's costing people for appeals. It's appraisals, it's attorneys, and everything else, and it's costing an enormous amount of money for people.
Thank you. Mr. Moretti?
I'll repeat the question.
Okay, very good. The question has to do with the process by which EST is being held responsible for the appeals process. Do they hold a financial responsibility in helping to, or actually helping to pay for this, should they be compensated further?
You know, being in business, I've given bids out, and when you, of course, when you underbid, you get to eat your money, or you don't eat it, you just, you take a loss because you made a mistake on your bid. But you supply a service to people, and you're responsible for that service, and that service needs to be done correctly, and this was anything done but correctly. You know, at the beginning, when they said there's only two companies in Pennsylvania that does this, and they're all, both of them are in lawsuits, I wouldn't have hired any of them. It was a terrible, it's a terrible approach to something with this magnitude that's going to go on to your county, but it also needs to be straightened up from the people on top, just not the commissioners, but the people at Harrisburg. Why would you let this stuff go on and devastate these places? So it needs to be fixed, and you didn't do your job. You don't deserve anything.
Thank you, Mr. Moretti. Mrs. Hess?
Yes, I'd like to echo something that Mr. Baker said, and that was about the appeals boards. I am not convinced that the current boards are the best we can do. It's not a criticism of anybody specifically, but I do want to work to ensure that all the individuals appointed to the boards of appeals are qualified, properly trained, and represent the entire county geographically by gender, age, and economic background, and I think that either intentionally or by a mission of proper training, that sometimes uniformity and fairness can be compromised, and I want to make sure that we are working very hard to not let that happen. Thank you.
Mr. Ruddick, you will have the final answer on this question, the opportunity to answer what you have heard since you initially gave your response.
Well, my response was that we're not going to pay EST any additional dollars for any additional formal appeals that are laid out until February. That doesn't mean that we're not going to hold them accountable for the process once we finalize the effort. We obviously will be finding support by bringing in a team, an appraisal team, an independent team- team, to help validate the values that are out there to make sure they have lived up to that particular standard. The formal appeal process gives us more data in which to make a well-defined position on whatever action we have to take legally. And we also have to be represented in court with those who have a pure understanding of what those values should look like in a county like Indiana. Specific to the boards, and I agree with what Shereen had said, doing it over again, we would probably had a longer training program for our boards to make sure that the plan was in place to move this project forward. We need to get to the state legislative team to make a difference in changing how we do real estate properties.
Thank you, Mr. Ruddick. We will move on to our next question. Today's debate being brought to you as a public interest by Penn Mechanical Group. Penn Mechanical Group proud to call Indiana County their home and want to encourage you to get out and vote on November 3rd. The first respondent to this question will be Tammy Shetler. And Mrs. Shetler, the question has to do with establishment of fair market value. A number of listeners want to know what the best method is for establishing a fair market value during the assessment process.
Well, obviously, I don't think how they went out and did it this way was a fair market value. They went out and they went around and they looked at everybody's properties. They weren't allowed to go in, and I'm glad they weren't allowed to go in. But they were going off of numbers that are so high-scaled, now we're going to turn around and they're allowed to bring in an appraiser to their property to prove something. Why didn't we just go with appraisers to begin with to have accurate information? These are trained professionals that are out there buying and selling homes for everybody every day. They know where these homes are located, you know, because you always want to hear the thing that was told to everybody, location, location, location. Well, they're out there and they know where these locations are. These numbers were so far stretched, it was past believable. I believe that this whole process would have been handled so much better had we had brought trained professional appraisers and have gone out and looked at people's property. We know what they sell for, that goes in the books, there's what you need to tax the property on, not on so-called potential. I have the potential of winning the lottery tomorrow, but that doesn't mean it happens. 10 years from now, it doesn't mean the property that I have now for $100,000 is going to sell for $200,000. I truly believe appraisers would have been the right way to go after this situation. Thank you.
Mr. Colgan, you will have the first opportunity to address this topic in rebuttal.
Well, along with Tammy, I agree. I think nobody knows our geography and our market better than our local realtors here. Crime and E, I can pick up a real estate book and I can look and see what a house goes for. I don't have to pay somebody millions of dollars to come in and tell me these outlandish values that these guys came up with. We should have, this, and again, I don't know the state laws on this, but to me, we would employ local realtors and they would make money at this. I think people's values would have been far more fair than what they are now. When you have an appraised value on a house that's $100,000 and yet it's assessed at $200,000, it just doesn't work, especially when nobody would pay that kind of money for it. So I think the only fair way to go about this is to have it done by realtors from this county that know exactly what these properties are worth, and that would resolve this whole matter. And again, alluding back to what Rod says, I don't know how this holds up in Harrisburg, but the changes need to go on down there. But it's up to us to defend these people around here.
Thank you. Mr. Baker, you are the next respondent to this question, having to do with what is the best way to establish fair market value during the assessment?
Well, let me preface that by saying that the best thing for property tax in Pennsylvania is property tax reform in Harrisburg because it's the worst possible way to fund government on any level, in my opinion. We need to have alternate taxes and so on instead of property tax. But in order to have a successful reassessment, first of all, you have to have proper data collection. And I think that by and large, a lot of the data that was brought in was flawed. The data entry must also be correct. I believe that there were a lot of issues there as well. But on EST's part, there has to be a proper creation of neighborhoods and modeling of the evaluation formulas. And I think that they really let us down there, and they looked at too few sales in Indiana County to make these determinations. I believe that what we need to do with this extension is to take it into another year, and we need to look to make sure that the 2015 real estate market is behaving like it has been for the last few years, or is it different? And there, I believe you're going to find that there are some significant differences.
Thank you very much. Mr. Moretti?
You know, this is, our opportunity as a county in Pennsylvania to set a statement out there that we're going to refuse to play by these rules anymore. You know, I bought ground, and when the bank came out to assess my ground, they looked at the house and maybe a few acres around it, and they didn't tell me that my property was worth $4,000 an acre. These, this is just so ridiculous and absurd of what has happened here. And I guess that's where I'm headed. We have to fight this. We can't shrug our shoulders and bob our heads and say, well, this is what it is. But everybody here is, at least is on the same playing field as that. But we have to send that message to Harrisburg and let these people, this is enough, we've had enough, and we're not going to tolerate it anymore. And use the people that we have here, the professionals, use them. We have professionals in this county, and they know what it's all about.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Hess?
What I can say is mass appraisal is not the same as fee-based appraisal, and we do need to have experts help with this situation. What I think the voters need to do is ask themselves, who are the people that can best get this done, based on experience, based on their current knowledge, and based on the connections that they have with other leaders in other communities across the state and across the region? So I think the voters need to think seriously about who can get this done. And this is a complicated situation. It is a serious situation, and you need people who are serious about fixing it for the long term and not just for the short term. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will move to Mr. Ruddick for that question. What is the best method for establishing fair market value in the assessment?
Well, again, Shereen said it correctly. Mass appraisals are different than individual appraisals done by local realtors. If we would have had the opportunity through the mass appraisal process to bring in local realtors, we would have done that. The requirements of this mass appraisal are so demanding that there are very few companies out there that will even step forward to do this kind of product. We have two in Pennsylvania, Tyler and EST. Tyler is still experiencing an eight-year flaw, I believe, as I understand it, in the Allegheny County region. So EST has certainly provided numbers to us. And the question we have right now is, are those the property values that people will pay coming in to Indiana County? And the answer is, we don't think so. We have to find a way to get those values down to where the values relate to what they are worth.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Shetler, one last time for you to address this topic about fair market value in reaction to what you have heard from the other candidates.
I fully understand what Shereen Hess was telling you prior to. And I understand there are rules, I understand there are regulations that we have to abide by. But my problem with this all is, this is what was forced on everybody's throat here in Indiana County, whether they wanted it, whether they liked it. Now, you are also putting another burden on the people to have to go out and hire their own appraisers to come in and prove to these people that they were highly over-assessed. That is the problem I have with that. You know, you put a burden on raising everybody's taxes, and then you put another burden on them to have to go out and hire attorneys, hire appraisers to come in and tell these people that their numbers are right and your numbers are wrong. That's a big problem I have with, and that's what I will stand behind. Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to our next question. Today's debate, again, we will remind you, is courtesy of AM 1160 WCCS and the Penn Mechanical Group. We salute them and thank them. Penn Mechanical Group proud to call Indiana County their home, and they want to encourage you to get out and vote on November the 3rd. The respondent who will get the first chance at this next question is Bob Colgan. Again, I'll remind each candidate that you have the chance to rebut, that doesn't mean you have to. And I'll suggest that you just raise your hand if you want to rebut, and if you do not, just don't raise your hand, and we'll move on to the next question or the next person who does wish to respond. This next question, Mr. Colgan, has to do with the Jimmy Stewart Airport, the improvements that have been made there over the years and the continuing improvements. The county spent a lot of money on the Jimmy Stewart Airport expansion. What has been the return? What do you consider to be the potential of the Jimmy Stewart Airport?
Well, ironically enough, I had met with, I believe his name is Tom Robertson, and some of the people out at Jimmy Stewart Airport earlier this year. And they are defending the money that was put in there. And I don't have a problem with spending a little bit of money on things, but questions I had was, you know, are we now going to accept, or do we have an airline onboard? Can I get a flight here to go to Florida? I know I can drive 40 minutes to Latrobe and get on one. Is FedEx landing here, UPS, anybody? I mean, what am I getting back? What's my return on this investment? At that time, I was told the runway could not be used yet. The FAA would not give clearance because the trees were too high at the country club, and the FAA would not allow a takeoff because of the trajectory of these jets, the trees were in the way, which I thought at that case, somebody put the cart before the horse. I think it was unnecessary money that was spent. I think it could have been spent wiser somewhere else. And if it was going to be spent like that, I think they should have investigated with airlines and, you know, somebody that's going to make us some money out there. Right now, you know, they may not like it, but it's referred to as a private fly club. I have friends out there, they get insulted that way, but I'm sorry, that's exactly what it's referred to as. We're not making any profit out there. I was told specifically, they make money by selling fuel, and that's it. Now, unless they're going to bring in some airlines, something that is going to utilize that airport, I think it was a lot of failed money. I'm not against airports, but you know, we got to know what we're doing before we just go invest that kind of money. And I don't care if it was grant money or not, it originated from taxpayers, and I don't believe that it should have been used for what it was used for.
All right. Very good. Rebutts, please raise your hand again if you would like to rebut. Commissioner Ruddick does, Commissioner Baker, you do not wish to rebut? We have to go in the order.
Oh, then I just have something.
Okay. All right.
I just want to say that Jimmy Stewart Airport, I guess what I want to say about that is that it can be an economic driver for Indiana County in the long run. However, I think that we're quite a ways off from being there at this point. And I know we have obstruction issues and so on, that's going to cost considerably more money to take care of. That is not going to be local money, but you still need to understand that whether it comes from the federal government, or it comes from the state, or wherever it is, it's still our money, and it's still tax money, and I'm concerned about that. And we've taken quite a bit of criticism over what's going on at the airport. Some of it, I believe, is justified, and some of it perhaps is not, maybe a little bit too critical. So I do believe it could be an economic driver for the county. I don't foresee the day whenever we're going to see an airline flying in and out of there. I think that the best we can do there is probably a small regional airport and not a connector.
All right. Very good. Of those who are wishing to respond, I'm just looking for raised hands. Mrs. Hess? Mr., you, okay, Mrs. Hess is next. Mr. Moretti doesn't wish to respond. We have to go in the order, the order that...
Okay. So, Mr. Moretti, you, please. I'm next, okay. Well, I was there with Bob the day, the guys from the airport was explaining what was going on, and I guess the only problem, I, it's good, but in another sense, if you're going to do a project, start with phase one. If those trees needed to be knocked down, they needed to be knocked down first. Don't build the roof and expect the house to stand. And make sure it is beneficial, and hopefully in the future, it will reach out to many people so we can use it. But right now, it's one of those projects that we just started and we kept starting projects and projects. We need to get one finished before you get ahead of anything and keep going on to the next one.
All right. Very good. Mrs. Hess?
Thank you. A couple of things. First, a lot of people don't like to hear this, but we live in a global society, and we need to get connected. Indiana is already a fairly isolated county in the state of Pennsylvania. We hardly belong to any one thing. We're not part of the Laurel Highlands, we're not part of this, we're not part of that. We need to get connected to the rest of the world. IUP works with global and national leaders, our companies work with national and global leaders. They need to get people here, and they need to do it in a timely way. And our airport is the way we do that. I have to admit that I was a little bit unsure about its value in the very beginning, but I realize now that this is an investment in our business sector, in our job development sector, and in the way we're going to be connected to the wider economy in the nation and around the world. We have new technology coming, and yes, this is mostly federal funding that's supporting this airport, and I have no problem with that. This region built this country through our coal, gas, and oil, and timber, and other things, and we need to get money back, and that's how we'll do it.
Thank you. Mr. Ruddick?
Yes, thanks, Todd. I'd just like to tell you that the Indiana Regional Jimmy Stewart Airport, the expansion of that airport is part of a community-based effort to bridge an economy in transition, and that's where Indiana County is. If we don't plan for the future, we're not going to be able to attract the businesses that need to come to Indiana County. The cost of that airport obviously came out of tax dollars, but no, absolutely no local tax dollars were provided. All the dollars, I believe, were provided through the federal aviation. They're the ones who put up the flag about the obstruction well after we had planned and finished the last phase of the project, which is typical of FAA. But we're going to fix that problem. The one thing I would tell you is you had comments, I think, in the paper from Mike Price, the chairman of First Commonwealth Bank, who said, "We need to have that airport." There will be a charter service for an eight-year charter plane that's out there, that's number two. And number three, Aztec Drilling came to Indiana County because of the airport. So we have attracted businesses because of that expansion.
Thank you, Mr. Ruddick. Very good. Mrs. Shetler wishes to respond as well?
Yeah. I understand this project was very pricey, and I do understand we had grants, and I'll accept the grants, but like I said, no matter how you look at grants, it is money that we paid into. I just want to make sure that this project grows and does do what it's supposed to do. I just don't want to see money being dumped into something where we don't get something back from. I believe in time, we probably can work with it, and will be useful and helpful to us. One of my suggestions was, and I don't know if we can do this, would be why couldn't we get some of military base involved out there with the airplanes and get something going on as a contract with the government that way, once we get this up and growing and moving forward? I think that could be a significant help for the county, if that's possible. That's just one of my thoughts. So thank you very much again.
All right. Mr. Colgan, last shot at this question. Anything from what the other candidate said that you'd like to respond to?
Sure. We don't have contracts of anybody landing here. I sat with Tom, and in the two and a half hours I sat there, I didn't hear one airplane take off, land, start, or anything. So again, as insulting as it may sound, I'm speaking on behalf of the majority of Indiana County. It's a fly club. Fact of the matter is, if this wanted to be built, then we should have had promissories, we should have had people sign on, we should have had some of these companies like Shereen and them alluded to, that were going to promise to utilize that airport. We invested a pile of money, and I don't care where it came from. I don't care if it was a federal grant or who. It was taxpayer dollars, so they took it from somebody out there that worked. And it was invested, I'm not going to say wasted, but it was invested improperly. I'm not saying I'd shut the airport down, but I'd certainly close up the feedbag on that. If they want to have a fly club, let them pay for it themselves. Sorry.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Colgan. Mr. Baker will be the next respondent to this question. Today's debate brought to you as a public interest by Penn Mechanical Group. Penn Mechanical Group proud to call Indiana County their home and wants to encourage you to get out and vote on November the 3rd. The next question comes, Mr. Baker, from one of our listeners as well, who asks, "Of the 35 departments that the Indiana County Commissioners oversee, which one or two departments would you like to see improved and why?"
Well, I believe that the first one of those departments that I would like to see improved would probably be our Children and Youth Services. That is an area of the county and a responsibility of the county whose job has been increased exponentially over the course of the last few years. The workload that's on those people there and the supervisors and so on there has completely outpaced their ability to be able to keep up with it. And the space that they're working in there is considerably too small, and the county needs to move forward with regard to making sure that we're meeting the needs of the children and the families in Indiana County. And I believe that we need to make some significant improvements there, and we're working towards doing those things. If there were another one that I would say, I would have to say that I would just want to continue to strengthen our public safety. We're very pleased that we have the radio... We're very pleased that we have the radio system up and functioning right now, but I want to make, I want to ensure that EMA and all the people that are working on behalf of the people of Indiana County to provide for their everyday safety have everything that they need. We did make some significant progress earlier in the year when we, through our folks at CCAP, County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania, were able to help to craft and finally push through some legislation that changed the way 911 funding happens. It was in desperate need of upgrading. I think that the last time that it had actually been looked at was in the 1990s, and so we made some significant improvements there. But those are the two areas where I think that I would like to see some significant improvements.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Baker. Each of you, again, please raise your hand, and I'll ask you to raise your hand now if you want to have a shot at this question. Mr. Moretti does.
Do I want that?
Yes. Oh, you don't want that question. I thought you did. Okay. Mrs. Hess, the question belongs to you.
Thank you. I'd like to see our jail system have some more resources, and they are doing a very good job at helping folks who are released get the help they need for treatment of substance abuse issues, and the collaborate, you know, seeing more collaboration between probation and county assistance offices and things like that. Those folks are working very hard out there. I've met with them, and they're doing, they have a lot, a lot of serious issues to contend with. I also would like to see our planning office folks have even more support. They are an excellent planning office, and these are the folks who are working on making sure that our communities are planning for the future, and that we're having the amenities that we need to attract and keep young people and businesses in our county, in terms of housing, and schools, and retail, and recreation, and, you know, rural outdoors is a great asset of ours, and we need to make sure that we support those efforts. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Ruddick would like to respond to this question as well.
Yes. First of all, I would probably tell you, the assessment office is going to need a lot of support as we move forward, from all that we've talked about here in the last three or four months. And I totally agree with Mike Baker. We have been working on CYS to get them into a stable, larger facility to meet the demands of domestic violence that is growing out of the drug situation that we're all facing right here in Indiana County. But the other area that really needs to be beefed up is our Human Services Department. We have a significant problem with poverty in Indiana County, and we need to find ways to actually bridge that particular issue so that we can provide services to those who are in need. We have a large part of our county, particularly in the rural sectors, that require our attention. We have to have more service agents out there, working with them hand in hand, to build a better future for them, both in transportation and human service needs.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Shetler wishes to respond.
Yeah, I hate to echo in on this, but I sit on the Children and Youth Advisory Board, and there is so much more that needs to be done for them. I sat and watched brand-new computers that sat in their area for months that were never bothered to be hooked up. This is a very vital area for our county of children that need to be, somebody needs to watch after them. They have a very important job. I've talked with these people, their hearts break every day that go in and deal with what they see with family situations. Their hands are tied so heavily by things. They have my support 100%. And then the other issue that almost goes entwined with children and youth issues is the drug issue that's happening in Indiana County. If we don't get involved and get something out there and handle the situation that's going on with the drug epidemic in our county, we are killing our youth off, and without our youth, there will be no future for our county. So those are two big issues for me.
Okay, very good. Anybody else? Mr. Colgan, you would like to respond?
Yeah, I'll go along with, I think we really need to look into this drug issue that's going on here in the county. But you know what? It's going to go back to the judges, the attorneys, the people that defend them. You know, I'm tired of people getting arrested for something, and then they skip along out, and you know, then they go into rehab. You know, you commit a crime, you should be held accountable, and that's what we have that jail for. Toss them in there and make them serve the full term. This rehabilitation and that is just getting a little ludicrous, especially when you see second, third, fourth time violators of this. The children and youth, yes, I see the, I've seen people out there that have suffered from this stuff, the domestic abuse, and I don't think we can turn our backs to that. As far as the sector, as far as helping out the people in need, you know what? There's some out there that are just utilizing the system, sucking it for what it's worth. We need to really look at who's getting this money and make sure it's going to the proper people, not the people that just want to sponge off the system.
Thank you. Mr. Baker, you began this question cycle. It is your last chance to respond to the things that you've heard.
Well, certainly, I've heard, and certainly have been very well acquainted with, the drug issues that we do have in Indiana County. For the 30-plus years that I served in the county coroner's office, I think I was probably closer to it than anyone else. And I've seen a lot of changes in what's going on, just in the past few years here with the drug problem that we have. While I was coroner, pretty much most of the time, the drug-related deaths that I dealt with were prescription drug-related. But now we find that heroin has become so prevalent and so cheap on our streets that it has now become the major driver of death among not just Indiana County, but across the Commonwealth with our drug problems. So I do believe that that is a very serious issue, and as I said, I am a strong advocate for public safety, and that means EMS, and our police departments and so on. They are on the front lines of that battle every single day, and we need to make sure that we support them.
Very good. Our debate today being brought to you as a public interest by Penn Mechanical Group. Penn Mechanical Group is proud to call Indiana County their home and wants to encourage you to get out and vote on November 3rd. You're listening to our Indiana County Commissioners Debate on AM 1160 WCCS Homer City. And as we consider the next question for our Indiana County Commissioners candidates, the first respondent will be Tony Moretti, and the question is this. And again, we've got a lot of questions from our listeners. "We have a lot of so-called industrial parks in Indiana County, and many of them are empty. Why are we spending so much money and not attracting businesses?"
Well, that is a good question, and I believe one of the reasons why we're not attracting interest is what's going on in Harrisburg. Because we tax people out of the, we tax people out of here. They can't afford the taxes. They don't want to come here and not make a profit. Businesses are to make a profit, and I need tax reform in Harrisburg. We just, we have the gas, the fuel tax, and when you start thinking about these guys running these projects with the gas, natural gas industry, that adds up pretty quick when you start putting, in an eight-hour shift, you're running one machine that's taking 50 gallons. We need that tax reform, and businesses are here to make money, and as long as they're making money, they have employees, and that moves the economy. And I'm just a firm believer, I'm tired of the property tax, and I'm tired of listening to people in Harrisburg that say we have the House Bill 76, and it's sitting on the table doing nothing. And we're not going to grow any of those industrial parks until this problem gets taken care of.
All right, very good. Again, please raise your hand if you would like to rebut each of the candidates. Mrs. Hess has asked to be rebut, and Mr. Ruddick, I think everybody has. So Mrs. Hess, it's yours.
Thank you. "Economic development in rural America is extremely difficult and complicated. You know, we face things like, you know, limited access maybe to capital, poor infrastructure, technology issues, transportation issues, but we need to do it, and it takes a long time. These parks are an investment in the future. Things are not going to happen overnight. It is very frustrating. It is exasperating to see them sitting empty. But I believe that we do have good people working on these issues, and, you know, again, the voters need to think about putting folks into office who are going to keep on that trajectory of working hard and connecting with people in the region, people in the state, people in the nation, and people around the globe, leaders around the globe, who are going to come up with these solutions for rural America. So I'm committed to doing that. It is difficult, and you need people who are committed to it over the long term, and you can't just look at things in the short term when it comes to economic development in rural America."
Mr. Ruddick.
This is an important piece of Indiana County. That's the economic piece. We have to have those kind of programs available. We have to have those corporate locations, the Commerce Park, the corporate campus, PolyVision. We have a program down in the Canton area to build upon the economic programs from Indiana County. Windy Ridge Park is not funded by Indiana County. Windy Ridge Park is funded by the Indiana County Development Corporation, and they're doing a great job in attracting business, and I think they're going to have a great story to tell in the next couple of years. Right now, they are satisfying some contracts. Let me just give you one example. In the corporate campus down in Blairsville, Wyotech and Penn Machine, in 2011, the corporate amount of money for market value for those two properties was $63,590. Today, those two properties bring in $1.5 million in market value to that area, and that's because of that campus and that corporate net.
Thank you. Mr. Ruddick. Mrs. Shetler, you indicated you would like to respond to this as well.
Yes. I agree with Shereen. We are a rural area, and that does make things very, very difficult for us. But we can't back off, and we have to keep going with these different parks and organizations. This is another way to help bring in and promote jobs in the area. We have suffered enough these last few years with losing so many jobs in the area. We're losing another 450 here sadly at the end of the year. So I am in full support of moving forward and trying to get the manpower to help us so that we will not lose any more of these corporate.
Mr. Colgan.
Well, I somewhat disagree with you all. We don't build something without a promissory of somebody coming here, and that seems to be what we've done. As far as losing the jobs, I allude back to the fact, we have to keep what we have here. We don't seem to have that under control. So I want to keep what we have. I accept we're a rural community here. I'm not trying to be Pittsburgh, Latrobe, Greensburg, anything like that. I'm trying to work within our means here, and for far too long, we've overspent our means, to the point where we're in debt so far. We have to keep raising mileage, and again, you see the outcome of it. So we need to throw away the checkbook. We need to start to live within our means, and my good Lord, we have farmers right now that may lose their income. That's an investment we've got to make. We've got to protect these people here. That's our industry, because we are a rural community.
All right. Mr. Baker would like to respond as well.
Yes, I would like to respond to that, and I will say that as a rural county, I think that we're doing a really good job. I think that ICDC is doing a great job getting some pad-ready sites ready for what may soon be a great influx of business to Indiana County. However, I want to say this, and I've said it before, that Indiana County is already hemorrhaging the jobs that we already have, and we need to work to keep the ones that we have. And I believe first and foremost in all of that is our agricultural business, and our farmers and our landowners are in big trouble right now because of this reassessment. And it doesn't matter how many industrial parks we build, what really matters is, are our farmers going to lose their land? Are they going to lose their farms? And are we going to lose the backbone of the economy that we have right now in Indiana County? And that's agriculture. And I'm committed to making sure that that doesn't happen, and I think that we need to get this reassessment right, or not only will we lose our landowners and our farmers, but we will not have an attractive business climate for new business to come in and fill our industrial parks either.
Thank you very much. Mr. Baker. Mr. Moretti, you began this round, the question having to do with our county industrial parks. You have one minute if you would like to respond to anything that has been said.
Uh, no.
Okay, very good. Now, we're into the final half hour of the program. Each of you has had two minutes with one question, and then the others have all had a minute to rebut. There's not time to do that two-minute, one-minute format, so with your agreement and if no objections, we'll go one minute for each of you to respond as we roll through this next round of questions. And Mrs. Hess, we begin with you. And this question is, "How do the candidates feel about making the beginning of the County Commissioners' monthly meeting a question-and-answer session with the public? And this has to do as well with the idea of transparency in government." One minute.
I love that idea. I think anything we can do to encourage people to come and see what's going on, to get involved with their government, is a great idea. And I also think we should hold commissioners' meetings at different times of the day and in different parts of the county, if we can. Now, that takes some logistics and some coordination, but I think anything's possible. So I really, I think that's a fantastic idea. I also believe we can improve transparency by bringing in a more diverse pool of folks to serve on our many, many advisory boards and authorities that are involved with county government. There is a role for everybody. It takes some 900 and some folks to fill all of the elected and appointed positions that exist within county government, and it does take work, and everybody wants to have a voice. And I think that it is our job as county commissioners, as elected officials, to help people have that voice. And I've been doing that my entire career and through my volunteer positions, and I will continue doing that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Ruddick, or anybody else, please raise your hand again if you want to respond to this question, and everybody does. Mr. Ruddick.
Yes, I would remain open-minded as to how we conduct our meetings. I want to make sure, first of all, that we provide for the needs of those who come to those meetings. We would also have to work with our sheriff to make sure that whatever we do for safety and security because of the court system, that we do it in a very wise manner. I think it, I think the issue that I would find that we need to do more of is to get communication out to the public in general. While we rely on render broadcasting, and while we rely on the local media, paper print from Indiana Gazette, and the Dispatch, and the Punxsutawney Spirit, somehow, we've got to get the information in the hands of the consumer in the county. If extending the meetings, expanding the meetings, relocating the meetings is the way to do it, I'm all for it. I think we need to get information out, and perhaps mailers need to be part of that process as well.
All right. Mrs. Shetler.
Yes. From the get-go, I've said we have two meetings that are held during the month, the commissioners' meeting. One, and they're both held at the courthouse, and they're both held during the day. I believe one of those still should be held at the courthouse at all times, but the one of those should be taken out into the community, and we pick a place every month, whether it's Homer City, whether it's Marion Center, we go to a fire hall, we go to community centers. But this next set of commissioners needs to be the commissioners that go to the people instead of the people constantly having to come to them. And I would like to also have these meetings that we would conduct on going to the different areas in the evening. There are too many people in this county that work steady daylight shifts. They are concerned about things, but they have to have, take time off from work. Most people have to put two weeks in to get that day off. This way, they don't have to take time off work, and they'll have the opportunity to participate with the government of Indiana County.
Okay. Mr. Colgan.
I agree. I think, I personally think every month, we should have a meeting at a firehouse, community center, somewhere within the region, and it should be an open question-and-answer period. That's how we find out what the constituents want, not what we want. As far as the other meeting, it could be held within the courthouse for the executive session for voting and stuff. Why drag people through all that metal detector garbage and stuff just to get into the courthouse? It's inconvenient. It's held at a horrible time of the day, at 10 o'clock, I believe, 10:30. You know, ironically enough, some of us work. We can't make it there. So I believe it's our job to go to the people, not have the people come to us. Thank you.
Mr. Baker, I'll just rephrase the question so for the listener's benefit as well. Should the county commissioners' meetings begin with a question-and-answer session, and what is a better way to improve transparency of the commissioners' meetings?
Well, I will tell you, I think that if county government is going to continue to be responsive, it's going to have to change the way that it does some things. And I like the idea of having an open discussion between the commissioners and the public and the people that pay our salaries and so on. I think that's a really good idea. And I also would not be opposed to even allowing people to perhaps submit their questions in advance, either online, or by telephone, or whatever, so that we can be prepared to give them an informed answer whenever they arrive. I would also support the idea of having informational meetings, not just our regular public voting meeting, but informational meetings and workshops if the people would support something like that. I think it's a great idea, and I absolutely support the idea of doing things at different times of the day and in different places throughout the county. I think maybe a fire hall might be a little bit too small. I'm not against it, but I think we have plenty of schools with auditoriums and so on around the county, and I think that would be a great idea to get out there and let the people speak.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Moretti.
Well, everybody here is, we're all on the same page, and there's a gap between government and the people. We need to fill that gap and let the people be heard. You are there as an elected official, you're their employee, you're the employee, you're not the employer. And it's our job to serve the public, and if we follow through these plans, it'll make things a lot easier. People want to be a part of something, and this is a way to do it. Get them involved, and it takes, it'll take the pressure off of you, even as a leader. It helps the situation. And I hope, I hope we were able to get this done. It needs to be done.
Very good. Once again, we'll remind our listeners that today's debate is being brought to you as a public interest by Penn Mechanical Group. Penn Mechanical Group is proud to call Indiana County their home and wants to encourage you to get out and vote on November the 3rd. Our candidates will have the opportunity for closing statements. We will get one last chance with Shereen Hess for her chance to respond to anything that you've heard from the other candidates.
Thank you. On the, on the subject of transparency, another thing I'd like to see happen with our county is, we need a social media presence, and that's Facebook, and that's tweeting, and that's other online options, our website. Those are the ways that people communicate now, and they're viable ways, and it connects us not only within our community, but with the outside community. And so those are some really exciting opportunities that I think will also allow to us to connect to the younger generation. Thank you.
Okay. Well, we want to remind our listeners once more that each of the candidates will be given the opportunity for two-minute closing statements. So candidates, we want to reiterate to you that the closing statements will be two minutes in length. We have time for one more round of questions before we get to that, and it is the question that you were advised of ahead of time, and it has to do with everything that has been discussed here this morning. The question is, is there something that has been discussed here that you would like to continue to talk on and follow up upon? Mr. Ruddick, your opportunity.
Well, I think we've alluded to this. I just want to make mention, I know that, I think it was one of our candidates had mentioned about the loss of jobs at Halliburton. It's sort of interesting to note that of those jobs at Halliburton, I think there were 430 jobs that were closed, actually, only 44 of those individuals were really residents of Indiana County. It's sort of a feature that we're seeing in the migratory working arrangement, and there was an article in the paper recently, the True Review, about 5,000, we have the largest migratory work program where individuals live in a particular county and actually travel to another county for their job. So we have to be prepared in the job market to allow that to happen. And a good example would be people who live here that want to go to the new plant that's being designed out in Lawrenceville for, it's called a cracker plant for gas. We have to have a transportation network in place, so there's a lot of work to be done, and I really think that's the next direction.
Thank you. Mrs. Shetler.
Well, let me elaborate on one part. If you're saying there's only 44 people that live here in the county, that's a shame that there was only 44 people in the county. But if we had 430 people that were actually in and about in this county, working, they were here in and about eating in our restaurants, maybe staying at the different motels. So they, those people may not have actually been a living, participating person in our county, but they played a very vital role in the fact that they brought money into this county and spent their money here. So we lost, no matter how you look at it, 430 people, jobs left, and we lost money that way.
All right. Once more, the question for all of our candidates, this final question, is there something that has been discussed here that you would like to follow up on? Mr. Colgan.
In regards to the jobs, again, I'll hammer this till the day I die. We have a God-given natural resource here called natural gas. We have people, and I know this from being in this business, that utilize fuel oil for their heat. We have people that are using coal furnaces, outdoor coal furnaces. It's cost-efficient. Natural gas is controlled by the PUC. It's regulated as far as costs go. It's environmentally friendly. We've got lots of it, and we've got a lot of towns that are without it. We're working right now on trying to get it to earnest. We can make living much more affordable here for people. We can increase the wants for people to come here. By simply doing that, and by doing this, we create jobs, we build our infrastructure. We don't need fuel oil here in our county. We don't need to be sending our money overseas to buy this product. We have this stuff here, and I say we utilize this.
Very good. Mr. Baker, the question, is there something that has been discussed here that you would like to follow up on?
Well, I, there is a couple of things that I just want to say, and I have to echo what Tammy Shetler said. Whether or not those people that are leaving us from Halliburton live in this county, they still were a huge part of the economy of Indiana County, and whenever those jobs left, that was a major blow to Indiana County's macroeconomic picture. So I just wanted to get that in there. These are people that were using our services, using our roads, you know, investing basically some of what they earned back into Indiana County, and they will be missed. They will certainly be missed. And so that's very important to me. I also just want to reiterate one more time, one other thing that was discussed here today on the property tax thing. I cannot stress enough how important it is to the people of Indiana County to get our message out to Harrisburg and tell them that we need property tax reform here, that we need to take this off the backs of the people of Indiana County and the landowners so that we can grow this economy.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Mr. Moretti, the question is, is there something that has been discussed here that you would like to follow up on?
It is, it's about jobs, and being self-employed, I rely on people that have money, and what's happening is that they have less and less money. And the only jobs I'll be getting are the jobs out of necessity. My business load has dropped significantly over the years. And I'm going to ride the dead horse to the very end, because again, I'm with Mr. Baker. These people in Harrisburg need to get their head out of the sand and do something. They know House Bill 76 will make things a whole lot better, and especially Western PA. We're physically in a bad shape, and businesses aren't, I just feel that businesses aren't going to stay here until you quit beating them up with taxes. EPA, DEP, and all these other organizations. Pennsylvania isn't business-friendly, nor is it people-friendly, and it's time it gets changed.
Very good. Mrs. Hess, the question, is there something that has been discussed here that you would like to follow up on?
Yes. In terms of economic development and improving the quality of life in a rural area like Indiana County, I want to say a few things about agriculture. We have enormous opportunities here with the future of agriculture. I've said this before, but the northeastern part of the United States is going to be a place where we grow crops, and we grow things, and we produce food, fiber, and fuel for America. We're poised to be a leader, and we need to invest in the things that will help us become that leader. And we also need to invest in education, and we've got several things going on, and I'm a big supporter of the Central Allegheny Challenger Learning Center. These are the, these are the facilities that are going to produce the jobs of the 21st century. We need to prepare our students for that so that we have businesses who will be able to find an educated, an educated workforce when they move to Indiana County. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ruddick, you have the last chance to answer any of the other respondents.
Yeah, I want to go back to the comments that were made regarding the jobs, and I get that about the money on the economic side coming in and using our county. The point I was trying to raise is that we have to be more prepared for a workforce that's migratory, that will not settle in one particular county, but actually will migrate to other counties to perform their jobs, come back to Indiana County where they live and have a quality of life. So I think the issue here is, and it's going back to preparing those for the job market with those skilled qualifications, that they can be successful where the job market is moving. Certainly, we want to attract them here in Indiana County. We think it's important that we have the job opportunities for them to go into, and we're going to work very hard in getting those skilled plans through the Challenger STEM project, which will be very helpful, and also to look at the ICTC to make sure that those other skills for those individuals are prepared to go into the market as well.
Very good. Today's debate, once more, being brought to you as a public interest by Penn Mechanical Group. Penn Mechanical Group proud to call Indiana County their home and wants to encourage you to get out and vote on November the 3rd. Each of our candidates will be given two minutes to make a closing statement, and we've reached that point of our time together. Reminder to our listeners, the candidates as well, the order for the closing statements is based on a random drawing that took place prior to our debate this morning, and so the order begins with Mr. Ruddick, then Mrs. Hess, Mr. Colgan, Mrs. Shetler, Mr. Moretti, and finally, Mr. Baker. Closing statements. Rod Ruddick.
I want to first offer my best to my colleagues here today, participating in today's forum. We should all gain from each other's perspective on matters of community interest and those issues which frame our future. I have devoted my life to public service, service to my community, service to my county, and service to our nation. I have always worked to do what is right for the people I serve. In the military, we were trained that you can delegate accountability, but you cannot delegate responsibility. I continue to lead by that maxim. I am proud to note, and in the past 12 years, our Board of Commissioners has always rallied to our county's calling. We are working hard to continue that profile, yet respecting our individual opinions. I will continue to lead with honesty and integrity. I will continue to be your respected leader, whether speaking to students at a Veterans Day Assembly at any one of our school districts, or in service to our municipal leaders, our regional partners, the County Commissioners Association, or presenting testimony to our state legislative or our federal congressional leadership. And certainly, my first trip would be down to Harrisburg to get this property reform in place. I trust that I have demonstrated through my work ethic that I have lived up to your expectations in my nearly 50 years of public service. While I realize there are many challenges at our doorstep, I am well-prepared to lead and serve the citizens of this great county. We will not stop our efforts to move this county forward. I will continue to lead us through this court-directed reassessment. That is my charge. That is our destiny. I ask for your support and your vote on November 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ruddick. Mrs. Hess, your closing statement.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Renda Broadcasting for this opportunity. People should get as informed as they can so that they can make an informed choice when they go to the polls on November 3rd, and it is very important for people to get out and vote. County government is about as close to your personal life as you can get, and these are decisions that are being made every day that affect your lives and sometimes drastically. I am running for county commissioner because I believe we need competent, transparent, informed, and knowledgeable leaders who can make decisions about complex issues in a balanced and reasoned way. I am a problem solver. I have been working through my entire professional life and on many volunteer positions to do exactly that, solve problems. Believe that county government has a tremendous amount of work to do. We need to develop our workforce. We need to promote our agriculture industry. We need to help get small businesses and promote entrepreneurship. We need to invest in career and technical education. We need to help our vulnerable folks, our children and youth, and our folks who are struggling with mental health and disability issues. We need to have an eye towards the future while we're doing all of that. We need to promote our tourism and the other amenities that make living and working in Indiana County a privilege. I have been preparing for this position in many ways for my entire life, and now I want to work for the citizens of Indiana County, and I want to work with the citizens of Indiana County. I hope that I have convinced the listeners that I have experience professionally and otherwise through my volunteer activities, that I am ready for this job, that I come in here and I can hit the ground running, and that I can connect in a way that you have not seen, and I hope you will all vote for Shereen Hess on November 3rd.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Colgan, your closing statement this morning.
Well, I would like to thank everybody here, the other five that are vying for these positions, have been very courteous, very respectful of each other, and I appreciate that, and I've learned a lot through this process. As far as transparency goes, I've never hid from that. What you see is what you get. What I say is what it is, and that's just the way it's going to be. Apologies aren't part of something unless I feel I'm actually wrong about it. I plan on fighting for the people of this county. The people of this county are no different than I am. We have an agricultural industry that can be hurt so much from what has gone on here, but not just them. There's other jobs. Again, we have, we used to be a leader in coal and in gas production and so on. We no longer have that. Nobody seems to care. Everything, the whole emphasis can't be put on education. I'm against the STEM program. I'm against spending that kind of money, especially in these economic times. We have teachers, we have school districts, we pay people to do that right now. We can incorporate these classes into our classrooms. We don't need to spend that kind of money right now. We need to stop the spending. As far as these incubators and stuff, these things need to be utilized now that they're built. We need to get these businesses in, get them filled, and start to make some money. And, you know, putting one building out at Commerce Park doesn't, doesn't fill Commerce Park. I don't know what's going on out there, but it's been sitting empty. We need to fill these things. We need to bring jobs. We need to encourage people to come to this county, and the way it's being run right now, there is no encouragement. We need to get out there, and we need to promote from within, but we've got to keep what is here. We can't hurt the people, and we can't drive people away from here. Thank you very much. And November 3rd, you remember, we've given you an opportunity to vote out conventional government.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Mr. Moretti, your closing statement. Oh, wait, Mrs. Shetler, I'm sorry. Mrs. Shetler. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Again, I want to thank Renda Broadcasting for inviting us here for this, for this question-and-answer session. I thank all the people that are sitting out there, listening to everybody and taking everybody's thoughts and opinions on what's going on in the county, and I have grown great respect for everybody that's sitting in this room with me today. We've had to bop into each other here and there throughout this rigorous few months, and I think we've all learned a little bit from each other along that way, but we all have different opinions and different outlooks. Now, Indiana County, I stand by what my stance has been from all along. I came out and I said, I wasn't for the reassessment. I understood the reassessment had to be done, but that didn't mean I had to like it. And the more things that were brought up, that they were wrong and inaccurate, I walked away shaking my head. I sat with people that cried with me, that were so concerned they were losing their homes, farmers that were so upset over what had happened to their properties and evaluations. Tammy, we don't, we know our taxes are going to go up. We weren't expecting we were going to lose everything. Tammy, we don't like clean and green. We don't trust what government's doing. Why can't this just be fixed? My solemn vow and promise to this county is, we stick by this, we do not let February 15th get shoved down our throat, we come up with the fair and the accurate numbers that are needed so we can save this county. One stone's fair, one stone's accurate numbers are there. I will support the certification of the reassessment. Until then, that will not happen. You have my solemn word on that. That is what I've told everybody. I stick by my guns. I will be here fighting for jobs in this county. I will be here fighting against the drug epidemic in this county, and I will be the person that will be considered the commissioner that represents everybody in the county. You, the people, have a commissioner that will be listening to you. So please come out on November 3rd and vote for Tammy Shetler.
Thank you. Tony Moretti, your closing statement.
Well, it's been a long, a long year, and I personally, I'm kind of glad it's going to be in the end win, Bob. Another 11 days. Bob reminds me how many days we have left of this. It's a lot of work, a lot of time, energy, and sometimes money, but it's going to be satisfying. And, you know, we're here to serve the people, and I do that by my business, you know. People tell me what needs done, and that's how I do it. I fulfill my obligation to them, and we need to close the gap between government and its people. People want to be recognized, and you go out to little towns, and they'll tell you, hey, don't forget about us, where we live, and I won't do that. And right now, we just, we need to change, and I'm, I'm part of this unique situation that Bob Colgan and I did throw out there by putting two independents on the ballot. You have six people to vote for now, and remember, you only vote for two. You can vote for one, you can vote for two, but please don't vote for three because your ballot will get thrown out, okay? It's not very complicated, but please do the right things, and of course, like everybody else says, I hope you vote for me. So November 3rd, remember, and make your friends remember. It's very important.
Okay. Our final closing statement comes from Mike Baker.
Thank you, Todd. Thank you, everyone, for this opportunity to come out today. Thank you for those people who are listening. You know, we've heard a lot of opinions on a lot of subjects during this debate this morning, and I just want to touch on a couple of them. First of all, we've heard about jobs, we've heard about education, and of course, we've heard about property tax, and I just wanted to touch very briefly on each of those. As far as jobs are concerned, do we need new jobs? Absolutely, we do. And I realize that that takes infrastructure...
And I realize that that takes infrastructure, and that takes development, and that takes preparation. We have to make sure that we do that. But on the other hand, I want to say that in addition to attracting new positions and new jobs to Indiana County, we have to protect the ones we already have. We have to get the EPA off the backs of the coal industry. We need to protect our coal-fired power plants. We need to get the EPA off the backs of some of the only remaining industries that we have, and that would be the coal fields and our energy production. In addition to that, I also want to talk just very briefly about education and just say that I'm not so much against the STEM program. I think it's probably a really good thing. Is it affordable right now? I guess that's going to be up to the educational sector to tell us. But I will tell you this, that I truly believe that in Indiana County and across the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and perhaps across the nation, I think we spend enough on education right now. And I'm not an advocate of kicking that up. I believe that school boards, just like the rest of government, need to come into line with understanding that we have to live within the means that the people can afford. We can't just keep on adding and adding and adding to those costs of education. Finally, I want to say one other thing about the property tax. There's been no secret about my criticisms of what EST has perpetrated on the people of Indiana County. What it's done to our homeowners, our commercial businesses, and our landowners is a sin, and I think that it's wrong. It needs to be corrected, and I will not support implementing this property tax reassessment. We'll not make this part of the tax base until it is right. Please vote for Mike Baker on November 3rd.
And that will conclude our debate this morning. Today's debate is brought to you as a public interest by Penn Mechanical Group. Penn Mechanical Group proud to call Indiana County their home and want to encourage you to get out and to vote on November 3rd. And of course, we here at Renda Broadcasting echo that sentiment. Please do vote on November 3rd. Not only candidates, but many school board races are on the schedule as well. Want to thank each of our candidates for joining us here this morning. Shereen Hess, Rod Ruddick, Tammy Shetler, Bob Colgan, Mike Baker, and Tony Moretti. And thank you as well for joining us here on 1160 WCCS.
You've been listening to a special News and Public Affairs presentation produced by Renda Broadcasting of Indiana. Debate 2015, featuring candidates for Indiana County Commissioner. Special thanks to Penn Mechanical Group for sponsoring this morning's debate in the public interest of Indiana County. Remember, Election Day is Tuesday, November 3rd. The preceding has been a special presentation of Renda Broadcasting of Indiana and the St. Pierre Group LLC.